Good evening to the Brookfield Selectment Meeting of Tuesday, December tenth, 2019. Would you like to rise and join me in saluting the flag?
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some warrants to ratify. We have, I'd like the motion to ratify them. An expense warrant for December third, 2019, for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. We would like to ratify payroll warrant on, for December fourth, 2019, for a hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any questions? I'll approve. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we have an announcement, a reminder that a winter parking ban is in effect through April first, from the hours of eleven PM to six AM. There shall be no parking on any streets. Also, snow or ice cream will, driveway, sidewalks, or private ways shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown from any public way into the street or roadway. And then we have, I'd like to acknowledge minutes and reports from the Conservation Committee from ten fifteen nineteen, Personnel Committee from ten thirty nineteen, Brookfield Fire Department Monthly Report, November twenty nineteen, Brookfield Emergency Squad Monthly Report from November twenty nineteen, and the Grant Writers' Report for November twenty nineteen. And we have a couple anniversaries here on the fire department. We have Captain David Martel, who's been with us for thirty years, and Emergency Squad Terry Anderson, who's been with us for twenty-six years. So I would like to congratulate the two of them and hope that they're with us for quite a few years here.
And a motion, oop, pardon, a motion to accept the minutes and reports.
Second.
All righty. And then before, we have, I had an announcement here. Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Palado today announced nine hundred and twenty thousand in grants awarded to a hundred and seventy-four Massachusetts fire departments for gear and equipment that will reduce firefighters' exposure to cancer-causing chemicals on the job. And our fire department got one. We are receiving two thousand five hundred and forty dollars out of that. So we want to congratulate, I don't know if Peter wrote that to get the grant or if it was Kathy.
It was from the state.
It was from the state.
It was given from the state, yeah.
So I think we need to go back to acknowledge and accept the votes.
Okay, I would like, okay, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to...
You had a motion, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Our next, our first thing here on our agenda was with my agenda sheet, Karen.
Got one?
No, it was right there.
Did I, I had it right here with me. Did it get flipped?
Yes, no, you had it because you have, I just switched.
Okay, here, I'll use this one. Okay.
Go for it.
Okay. Our first on the agenda was, we're supposed to have a joint meeting with the CIPC and the Advisory Board, and I only see a few of the Advisory Board members here. And then, then that was the first one that's calling. And then the second one is the Board of Selectmen, Advisory Board, CIPC, and Financial Discussion. So if we want to start, we can have Laurie, our town...
Linda, Steve is running late and he'll be here in five to ten minutes. Could we...
Bring up something else?
Could we, could we, oh, I don't find the agenda...
Okay.
...save these two from Steve or I?
Yeah, all right, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
All right. We have next, we will bring up, we'll take these out of order. Can I have a motion?
Yep, motion to take things out of order.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have to sign CMRPC documents. We have invoices, it's invoice number nine, five, and two changes, and orders of the certificate of substantial completion.
Motion to authorize the chairman to sign?
Second.
All three of us, all three of us.
All of us have to sign, so a motion...
Some of them require all the signatures, but also there's both sides of the paper, so you have to really look at it.
Okay, I'll look at it and then we do it.
Motion to board to sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna go take that small agenda sheet, you guys are doing.
Okay. Okay. Ten. See, if there's any more here, I might take that.
Oh, sure. Actually, she gave me a red one, but I went for black.
It's okay. Grab one of the two that's up there.
Yeah, there's three.
Three.
That's all, I'm not bad. Now, we have, the next on our agenda, we have wage operations. We have one, read them all and then we can approve them. These came from the Highway Department. It's for employee to be hired, for emergency operator, Richard Chafee, at the rate of nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents. The next one is for Michael LaTao, and that's another emergency operator, at the same rate. Then we have one also for Bruce Clark. And the next one here is Alex Jagar.
Motion to sign or approve?
Second.
Any questions on that?
The only question that I have, I know a number of those gentlemen have been emergency operators in the past. My understanding, unless it was like, and perhaps it's a change in, in rate, that somebody who's, who's hired as an emergency operator, unless we officially terminate their employment, since they're seasonal on call...
No, three of these are, Bruce is the only one that's been out. All the other ones, these are new people. They're new people. Our next thing on the agenda here is to set meeting dates.
Okay.
In January, what we would do, we would probably, we have one here that we would be scheduled to have, but that's on New Year's Eve, so we don't know that.
I don't think so.
So we thought we'd start off and kind of keep in track with Laurie when she does the warrants. So I'd like, I'll read them all off, then I'll ask for a motion to approve them. January fourteenth of 2020.
Well, so, because of the warrants, you're going to the fourteenth? Okay, all right, I get it.
We're meeting on the seventeenth, so you actually have a few weeks without a meeting to stay on that schedule and not meet New Year's Eve if you need to obviously call a meeting.
We will.
Okay.
So it'll be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. And February, it would be February eleventh and the twenty-fifth. March would be the tenth and the twenty-fourth. In April, it would be the seventh and the twenty-first. I would like a motion to accept these dates for meetings.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any questions with any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have, had that one in here. I don't think we wanted to read this, did we? No, because that's, that's in the...
Things unto other are only if the topics come up, but there's nothing unto other. Actually, that's all just in case any of those topics comes up, I had the documents handed to you.
All right. Okay, and correspondence, which is next, we have some more China charter communication lineups. It says Spectrum is making its customers aware that on December thirtieth, 2019, that channels three-three-four and eight-four-five, and channel three-forty-eight and seven-sixty-one, and three-twenty-three and seven-sixty-nine, which are located on the SPP tier, will be, they will be eliminated, they won't be available on the lineup anymore. And then to view a current channel lineup, you can visit spectrum.com/channels, or if you have any questions, you can call John Mahah at seven-seven-four-two-four-three-nine-seven-three-five. And then here we had a couple of letters of appreciation from the O'Connell's, from Trudy O'Connell and Peter O'Connell. This was one about Ryan, how well he did, you know, with all the work down there on the Hayden Hyde and Kimball Street, and how cooperative he was with, working with the contractor and Andrew Lowe. So this could even be something we could use on Friday also. Karen?
Yes, I already have it, yes.
Oh, you have? Okay, and this is another one, Pete, this is another one also from the O'Connell's. They wanted to express their appreciation, "Work well done by the Selectmen Highway and the previous Highway Superintendent, Herb Chafee, and Cindy Thompson, and the CBG Advisory Committee, and Andrew Lowe at Central Mass, for securing the Community Development Fund and the Reconstruction." Thank you, Peter.
Well deserved. Thank you.
Okay. So do we still want, we're gonna wait for Steve?
I think we can get started. He's supposed to be here any minute based on what he told me, so I don't think we, I don't think we should ask him, he's behind the schedule.
Okay, so we'll...
I do have a thought.
What's your thought?
The thought is that we, there's some, several emails going around as far as potentials for earmarks and whatnot.
Yes.
And so maybe this might be a good time to brainstorm those ideas as to what there might be, so if and when an earmark were possible, that at least we'd be in concert with one another as far as what a, a project or two might look like, as far as spending that money, if we were able to get ahold of some. So since we're here, what projects do we have that we would think would qualify for that sort of thing, if the money were available? I have some ideas.
I thought you put, I think you should lead off.
My idea is that we have struggled, Kathy has struggled to find six ways to Sunday to find funds to improve the South Palm Beach. One of the next improvements to that South Palm Beach is access, where the path, pathway one is not ABA compliant anyway, but it's also washed away in a, in a portion of it, where the state owns the, the land and we can't get grants because they own the land. This would end, that not only does Brookfield use the beach, but other towns use the beach. I think it would qualify because of that as well, as far as a way to at least fund improved access to the beach. So that was my thought, as far as something that would be unique, and kind of off the, off the radar, and if we could put it back on the radar, that would be good.
Yes, it would be.
I know that's not technically part of our capital plan, but it's something that needs to happen in town, that we don't want to have it be a burden, since it's not our property.
And I think it would give the committee that's trying to establish the beach a good leg up to be able to feel successful, if we were able to do something like that.
I think it would be good if we had two to three projects. You never know, you know, they're, they're, they're saying, oh, you've got three or four projects here, and here is some money available for these plots, if they match up, you know? Sometimes you get funded for something just because of alignment.
An alignment, yeah.
And I guess, Karen, do you...
I have not heard back. He was supposed to call me back yesterday, I was gonna follow up tomorrow. If I don't hear from him...
He said, again, it's Ann Gobey's...
Yes, Ann Gobey's aide, Lucas, who comes here. He's going to speak to the Chief of Staff in Boston and try to find out what their priorities are for this year to kind of give us an idea of something that would, that would match. So as soon as I get the information, I'll pass it along to you.
I would think Tobin came around, thought to be a good match, but I don't know where we are on the planning and, or it's one of the, we talked about this in capital planning today, and at one point, I think the archaeology, the next steps in archaeology, the access road location and construction, those were two that I recall having been on the list.
So where we are with, with Tobin is we have the remaining three buildings to, to be demolished. When the, the state was going through our application, they were concerned about the ownership of the beachfront area, the roller rink area, that they didn't have what they thought proper paperwork. Al is actually working on that paperwork to make sure that they have the adequate information that they need to, in fact, allow us to take the third building down. With that, you're correct, Peter, as far as the other ideas, we may in fact need an archaeologist to come in, even with what we're about to do, but nobody's said that yet, so we should be okay there. Once the roller rink is down and gone, one of the things, because of the elevations between the beach and the, the street level is so high, there will be a need for some sort of stairway or rampway or something like that as well. So there, there are several things that are there. Again, it would, it'd have been my priority that we take the remaining buildings down and then take a deep breath and then decide what those next three or four things that we might want to do. We did put in the grant application with the Attorney General's Office, the signage, so that we'd have appropriate signage at each of the entrance ways. So should we get that grant, we'd have signage be one step ahead that way. So yes, I, I would vote totally that Tobin and, and next projects on Tobin be a focus as well.
And partly, our problem is we need to get a little farther ahead with planning and, and estimates of, of costs of projects, because we can't, we have, we can't put it at the end of the state for earmarks, we've got pretty far figures, I would think.
So if these were two thoughts, two thoughts moving forward, I'd certainly address at least the, the ABA compliant rampway at the beach to ask Ryan what his estimate might be for that. That would be a way to at least get a number around that. As far as Tobin, again, I don't know what that next step ought to be. We probably ought to call a meeting just related to Tobin to decide what we, what we think the appropriate thing is. Maybe I could take that as an action for in January to, to schedule a meeting.
I don't want to be really speaking here, but it seems to me the fire engine, it's a, it's a logical...
Is it a logical ask? Yeah, it's a logical ask.
We know it's coming up, we, it's been on our radar. We've asked for a new fire engine, we get funding for it. I don't know whether a new fire engine would be a logical fire engine or not. Finally, it seems like renovating the great room.
I'm sorry?
Renovating the great room, the door, the door that, the stairlift has not been approved. Is that correct?
I don't know.
I thought it's news today.
Kathy reported, Kathy LaRocca, she reported today that the Architectural Access Board had...
They have to come in and look at, to make sure we can use it?
They have said that, that they will not approve it as ABA compliant, as decided by the Architectural Access Board. We had asked them for a permit, a variance, I don't know if it might work, to install the chairlift, to meet on a temporary basis the ABA access required to be able to use the upstairs room. Apparently that was denied. But you haven't received word?
No, we haven't received anything.
No, we had not gotten a formal notification about that.
But since I sat in on the CBDG planning meeting the other day, that might just be the nut to break the, breakthrough on the elevator. There might be money, CBDG-related monies now, especially if we've been stopped on the other end.
So, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good list.
Yeah, it is.
There may be other projects that others would, for example, I don't know where we are on any property in terms of doing the, the environmental connection, or whether the solar port for the police station might also be in line with the state's energy, alternative energy goals. I, I'm gonna keep going. But we would, somebody would need to have a conversation about what's, what's a good strategy on this, this is probably too many, too big a list.
This is something I, I feel like Clarence would say we should get together, you know, after the first year, and do some brainstorming and figure just what is most, most important and get a list going.
Where are we starting?
Well, and it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt in those to have more than a few, though, because I, it feels like having, having the ask out there is what got communities, what they were looking for the last time that this went out. So the key is just having some solid number around it. So if, if Ryan can give us some good numbers on the...
The ramp, anyway.
On the ramp, anyway, and I know Peter's got some numbers on the fire engine for use, because I know he monitors the market on a regular basis to see what's out there, because secondary market is really kind of very hit or miss as to what's available and what, you know, whether or not it meets the very specific criteria that we have for the community. And then it's, it, this is, yeah, usually, I mean, usually Bill's pretty proactive in letting us know what's going on with the communication from the Town Hall Improvement Committee, but Al may have been closer to it, and it may be that there's still some negotiating, negotiations going on regarding the chairlift, so.
We could have, if we felt in doubt, property acquisition also.
Yeah.
The things are all on our list.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so...
So we, we need Kathy to be part of what we're talking about.
Yeah, Kathy.
Yeah, sure, so, so setting up a January meeting would be a good thing.
I think it would. Another thing I would like to bring up tonight, I have had quite a few people questioning who gave permission to the Recreation Committee to put a skate, skating rink over on the Common. And the first thing I saw, it was on Facebook over the weekend, and I said, none of us gave permission. So what I had Karen do, do yesterday, I think she called our insurance, and he said, we don't, if it would be a liability to the town, and he said, no, he said, what we would do, we'd put a sign up there would say, skate at your own risk.
Yeah, I think that's what Sturbridge does as well.
Yeah, but I mean, but still, they should have notified us, let us know.
I knew they were, they were talking.
Yeah.
They just weren't talking about us.
But they just, no, they weren't, they just went ahead and did it, so.
Ask for permission, what is it?
Ask for forgiveness instead of permission.
In my experience, when people watch something on Common, those requests are typically, typically onto the Cultural Council, and so that may, they may have gone to the Cultural Council and done that ask.
But still, maybe they should have notified the Board of Selectmen, so we would have known, because there's been so many people calling and asking every time I see somebody, they said, who gave them permission?
I'm not saying that that was prior to, I'm just saying that's been the practice, and if, it may be helpful if you communicated to a broader audience what might have to come to the Selectment, or what people understand, who should be asked if they don't make the request.
Jean LaRocque did come in from the Cultural Council the other day, and she talked about the skating rink. She said there were some things that she wished they had done differently, and, and I'm not sure if she, she didn't oversee the project either, I'm not sure if they did. I'm sure they probably got permission, she didn't state one way or the other, but I know she said that her personally, she wasn't necessarily speaking for the committee, but I guess they had to use some benches to put it in.
Right.
And she was wishing things were done a little bit differently.
Lauren?
So, I guess a question and also a statement. So I do know that the Rec Department did go to the Cultural Council, because they asked them for the money for it as well, which the Cultural Council had planned on giving them to pay for the skating rink. Currently, the skating rink is up there unpaid. I will not pay bill for the skating rink, because no one from the Rec Department will get back to me, because there is, I have an issue with the Rec Department, because the bills are coming in saying Rec, Brookfield Rec Department. However, they're asking me to cut checks to them to pay a whole two Brookfield units towards. And I've asked multiple people from the Rec Department where the bank account is, why am I cutting checks to another agency, and why are they building Brookfield Rec Department here, when I... here when I already have vendors contacting me saying that they have, the rec department has unpaid bills that I've never heard of? So I have not paid for the skating rink. So we're all clear that skating rink is up there unpaid and I will not be paying for it because no one will get back to me. So that is a whole nother issue that I don't know if there's clarification somewhere as to how they're operating.
We have had problems in the past. I know we've had to call them on these bills, we've called the chairman and he's never got back right now.
Jeff gets back generally, if you call him about a specific thing. So if you want me to reach out to him.
He's emailed twice over the last two weeks and generally he'll get back to it, but I haven't been able to keep about that.
That's not typical.
Right.
That's not typical, so could you send me the information that you have the questions on and I'll reach out to him?
But we have had best, we had problems last year also with the rec.
I think it's a seasonal thing, it's kind of like there are periods during the year where I'm impossible to get in touch with. Jeff has some periods like that as well.
But I think that's right, I talked to Burkefield Sports.
No.
Understood, and it may be, it may be a case of they paid for it out of the, they probably paid for it out of the funds that they had collected that is that the fund that they did get authorized to set up a couple of years back. And they're, and they're looking at it as a reimbursement of expenses that they normally would have billed back to the town directly, but it seems odd given the fact that the vendor, you're saying that the vendor hasn't been paid either.
The bill from the ICE department, Burkefield Rec Department, then they gave that bill to the cultural council and asked them to pay for it. So the cultural council gave me the bill on a voucher and told me to cut the check to Burkefield Sports. But because they're running a revolving account through the town, I can't cut them a check because I don't know what they're doing with that.
Right, so we just need to get the paperwork.
Their account had been approved under past administrations, past accountants. So we need to have that conversation as well as a part of this. Because youth sports is an entity that this board years ago, whether we approved it formally or informally, it's been how they've been running and...
I think it has to be.
It would be.
It has to be formally.
Yes, I think it has to be.
It would sound like there needs to be, needs to be a conversation.
Yeah.
And a procedure.
Yes.
Yep. So I'll take it as an action to reach out to Jeff and try to get, get at least, if you can forward me the details and the email, I'll play a phone tag with him.
Perfect.
Does the board want to approve the use?
Well, we just, so, so...
You would normally have to get permission, right?
Well, and, and I don't know that we were able to find the vote, but I remember that the conversation occurred and, and it was at the time, you know, it's with, it is within, at the time they had brought some materials that showed it was within the confines of mass general law for them to set that up and run it independently.
You mean the rink or this?
No, the, the...
Oh, the account they have, because I know the account's not here with the town.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
So but what's, what's key, it sounds like, is for Laurie to understand at least where the account is and what rules they're operating it under so that she has that same information that was provided the first time, which is not currently residing with the account's office, so.
All I'm asking about is you want to make sure precedent isn't set, then you later just use the common.
Yeah, I agree with you, Peter, they shouldn't be able to be setting up accounts in all different places for their monies.
No, he's talking about the use of the green.
Use of the common.
Oh, the use of the common.
Doesn't, doesn't any use of the common require your permission?
The last time I researched it...
Well, it's not as though the cultural council has the whole use in of the, I know with the gazebo, when I, you know, I'm a justice of the peace and when I've used the weddings, I used to always have to ask them for permission to use the gazebo, but I don't think we have to ask them for permission to use the common.
The last time I researched this thing, it was that the banister committee, which doesn't exist, had the yea or nay as far as the use of the common. I would say, and I think what we said at that time was because that committee did not exist, that it came back to the board of selectmen. But I think what we've allowed, more than anything else, is that the cultural council beyond the gazebo has managed affairs over there, which done a good, nice job. And so I think it may be important that we clarify how we should go forward.
So that's another, we should probably get together with them also.
Yep. Maybe on our January seventh, what is it, fourteenth or probably the twenty eighth, we probably ought to have a conversation, invite them here to have a chat.
Karen, can you put that down? Okay, so is that all of now? Steve is here so we can continue on with our meeting. We waited for you.
We had some good fruitful conversations.
I was gonna say, we certainly had enough.
Yeah. Okay, Laurie, would you like to come up?
Sure.
And as you noticed, and I passed around, we had a few copies from Sarah Hunter who we had hired to go into the, you know, the treasurer's office and start, you know, reconciling and accomplish different things that she has been doing. She's been taking care of like cash books, she's been setting up balances and she's been doing all kinds of work in there and she's accomplished quite a bit. And maybe Laurie can explain some of it.
Sure. So I've spoken with Sarah multiple times since she started. She's made quite a bit of progress in the treasurer's office. She's gone through and organized all of the files in the office. They've started scanning everything. That way the files are able to be shared between her and I as well as her two employees. They've went through and organized each month for fiscal year nineteen, made sure that all of the folders are accounted for. As of Saturday, when I spoke to her, she sent me over their cash book for all of July. They were not able to use anything from the former treasurer because it just didn't match. It had a wrong starting balance, it wasn't effectively a cash book. She completed her cash book for July fiscal year nineteen. She is confident in her numbers. I have it here. I haven't had time yet to balance my numbers to her, that's what I'm planning on doing tomorrow. So I'm hoping that we are at least in the same ballpark and it would be a good starting point for us. She also spent some time on Friday in the office, working with Holly, training her on how to use Vadar. I got them both set up with their own users so that way we're not, no one is sharing accounts because this is the last thing we want to be doing. She trained Holly on how to enter all the turnovers in Vadar. I spent time with Holly when I came in on Wednesday last week and showed her how to print checks. So Holly should be fine moving forward for doing everything for fiscal year twenty. And Sarah's confident that she'll be able to do fiscal year twenty entering receipts on her own. And we seem to be moving at a good pace right now. We've yet to be in the office at the same time, but we...
Or at least communicating.
We are, yes, and...
Yeah, I've been communicating with her too. She sends me the updates. I was up on Friday also.
Yeah, she works odd hours, so I mean, she calls me at home on Saturdays and, which is perfectly fine. So she's made good progress as far as what we've been doing in accounting. I did run into some issues within the treasurer's office when I went in with Holly on Wednesday. I addressed those with Holly, they were from the former treasurer. Holly was going to bring them up with Sarah. I don't want to be too hands-on in that office. There were issues with old bank accounts, old checkbooks still being in the possession of that office that I had asked to be shredded when I got here in May. I'm going to double check and check in with both of them, with Sarah and Holly, to make sure that's been handled. There shouldn't be any checks in the building other than the checks that printed out of Vadar. So that should be all set. As of today, I have the fiscal year nineteen receivables, which is the balancing between the collector and the accountant, are like ninety-eight percent done and everything is balancing out. So the only differences that we're showing are a couple payments that the collector caught in June and I got in July of fiscal year twenty, which is completely normal. An issue we identified is that the way that the senior work off is being accounted for is incorrect, so that I addressed with Al today and we're going to try to fix it if we can really quickly this month. It might not be possible because realistically, senior work off should be put through the payroll on your last payroll warrant in December. It's never been done that way here. So there'll be a lot of questions, I'm assuming, from your senior workers as well as probably a few issues when they get their W-2, which they haven't gotten in a few years, unfortunately. So we're going to address that. It may not be possible to get it done for this year, if not, we're going to have to correct it next year. We will not back pay anyone.
One more procedure.
One more procedure.
Thank you.
So that's the cash. We got, I spent time working over the phone with Al last week. We have the tax rate pretty much set. It took some time getting all the revenues posted for fiscal year nineteen. I am confident that we caught ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the revenues. There may be one or two things that are misposted, not posted. In the end, I had to finish them myself because the treasurer did not complete them before she left. Sarah had just came in and wasn't able to do them. I think we accounted for everything. We, fiscal year eighteen stabilization as well as your trust interest was never posted. There's nothing we can do about that now because Schedule A is already done. However, it's all posted for fiscal year nineteen and accounted for in the recap. We were able to cover all of the fiscal year nineteen deficits in the recap and still come in with a lower tax rate. So next year should be looking really good because we won't have any deficits and have an even better tax rate. So the perk to that is you will still have a deduction when I submit your balance sheet for fiscal year nineteen. They will still deduct from your free cash the deficit. However, you will not have to go to town meeting in June and again from your free cash cover that deficit. It's covered on the recap, so it's just a one-time hit from your free cash rather than two. We came in at an overall deficit of about ninety-three thousand dollars. The fiscal one, fiscal year twenty-one budget is what I'm working on now. I've identified quite a few accounts that need to be corrected when we do the budget for next year, the biggest one being snow and ice. Per the seat accounting structure, the UMS accounting structure, you cannot just have one snow and ice account, it can't be dumped in one account. So you have to break out your payroll and your expenses separately. So I will be working with advisory as well as highway to determine how much they think they spend on payroll and how much they think they spend on expenses because everything will have to be broken.
Highway has that.
Yeah.
They have that going back like five or six years.
And we have that as well. I can break out their payroll from that. So there'll be a lot of changes when we do the budget for this year, just because there's a lot of accounts where we've been paying payroll out of expense accounts and expenses out of payroll, which can't happen.
Quick question, how long has that kind of accounting rule under UMS been in place regarding, not having a single snow and ice account?
So it's ever since the UMS accounting structure came into effect.
It's like a decade ago, isn't it?
Yeah, so it would have been effect for you from whenever you switched from stat accounting to UMS, which I'd have to look back in your books to see when you switched. So it would be whenever you switch from like a two-digit in the front, like an O-one or a one-O, to these O-O-ones. If I had to guess, probably like six years because I know I've gone back that far in your books. A lot of accountants just don't switch them, they leave them. No one ever really enforces it, they just give you a, well, you should have done it this way on your Schedule A. I mean, the auditor is the one that's going to write you up for not having it and more or less they write me up because I'm the one who's handling the books. So it's an easy split, we're just going to split them all up in the budget. As far as funding the audit, I found two accounts that have currently no use. I don't know that they'll have any use this year. One of them will definitely have no use because it was a double fund. So the grant writer's position was always funded out of the consultant expenses account. When we did the budget for last year for fiscal year twenty, we actually funded a position called grant writer payroll, but never removed the consultant expenses account, which is ten thousand dollars. So there's a ten thousand dollar budget in that and there's also the computer acquisition budget of five thousand dollars. Effectively, if the grant comes through that we're hoping for the computers, we wouldn't need the computer acquisition budget, so that would be about fifteen thousand dollars. There is still money in the reserve fund of fifteen thousand dollars, however, you're still looking at a shortfall in the accounting budget, which you are aware of, to fund the rest of the PVPC contract for this year and potentially some in the treasurer's, which we may come in right around what we need for the treasurer's budget for this year. And then the other question you could pose to the highway department is if the tree warden expense budget is being funded under them because they are currently the ones spending the money because there doesn't appear to be a tree warden.
Right, I think we actually officially, we appointed Brian as a tree warden. Yeah, he's a, our highway superintendent is also appointed as a tree warden.
So he has quite a bit of money that potentially could be used as well.
We have, we have quite a bit of trees that need to come down. He may not even be aware of the amount of money that he still has left in that account because, because I think there were some questions over how much got funded where regarding trees. And, and we definitely, some of that is definitely needs to just stay put where it's at for what it needs to get spent on.
So realistically, those are the only accounts I can come up with that could potentially be used towards funding the audit right now.
Other than reserve potentially?
Other than the reserve, which we will need, there's fifteen left in the reserve. We're going to need at least ten to fund the remaining portion of the accounting budget. So you're looking at about five.
Didn't Andrew Lowe say something Karen?
Andrew Lowe said that he thought that there was some...
Federal.
That's for a federal. There's money in the CBDG contract, but it's for a federal audit and that's if we get federally audited, which we most likely will. You are federally audited if you hit a threshold of receiving a certain amount of grant money in one calendar year.
And you said we might make that?
We most likely will.
Okay.
A federal audit is different than having just a regular audit.
Yeah.
But they, we do have money to cover that federal audit.
But we don't have the money to cover like five years of an audit.
We don't have money to cover right now any audit.
Didn't you tell me the other day you estimated it might cost us about forty thousand dollars?
For a full five-year audit, yes. One year is generally around fifteen thousand. Other than that, everything's going smoothly. As soon as I start balancing with Sarah, we should be able to move fiscal year nineteen right along. Fiscal year eighteen is fully closed in Vadar and on the books and everything went smooth. I'm going to start pulling apart your accounting structure for fiscal year twenty, so that way there's no more issues. I started passing out new accounts to people that needed them. We received our grant for the fire department, so he got his new account for that. And that's about it.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you, thank Laurie, do you have any idea what we spent your day on sort of like the treasurer, you know, the treasurer plus the consultant?
Oh, you mean the previous one?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
We have spent, without the last payroll that was just approved, which I believe was about eleven hundred dollars, we've spent eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars on the treasurer and on the treasurer's consultant, we had already spent six thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and that is without the last payroll.
You estimate that being on eleven hundred?
The treasurer, I believe, was eleven hundred and I believe the consultant was about six hundred.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So, so just so we're all clear, it's that the advisory board is now able to move forward with the twenty-one activities and that you have a good relationship with the accountant as to moving that effort forward?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have a good understanding of all the accounts that we need to have delineated and the procedures that relate to those accounts?
Yep, so I met with Tom and Jeff about two weeks ago and I have their... Yep, so I met with Tom and Jeff about two weeks ago and I have their budget from last year in Excel. I'm gonna go through and add lines where they need to be added. I am putting together the budget request packet for them and then they are going to, we're gonna meet and they're gonna roll it out as they see fit.
So, and the department heads are clear as to who's got what responsibilities and they're prepared or preparing to support-
We have not gotten that far yet.
So, we have, the advisory has our next meeting this coming Thursday night and the agenda is the fiscal year twenty-one budget, where we, you know, we, we've had ongoing meetings with, for instance, Ten Task, U sixty-one, library, so it's, we have not, you know, we have not been idle and we've not just been, you know, lost in, in, you know, the problems we've had here. We're moving along and I know that Tom and Jeff, it's a little subcommittee meeting, Laurie, to get things on track. And, and yes, that's our, that's our agenda.
I think one recommendation I would have for this year is that once you have like the plan together for exactly what the account structure needs to look like and, and in essence, what lines the department head should be asking to get funded and what those definitions are, that we actually do during their workday. And I, I know periodically, members of your committee have been available, like during work hours, is if we could hold a meeting with the department heads to give them clear communication of structure, timeline, expectations of detail of submission for the purposes of the review by advisory, we could piggyback, you know, the, their capital requests and what the expectation is about level of detail, timing of the communication for the capital improvement committee. And, and do that as an open kind of question and answer session so that there's like clear communication in what we've had in the past and stuff getting thrown in their box and saying, hey, get it back to me by X date. So-
That was our plan. Yeah, yeah. That's, that's been planned two years running, but, you know, I, I-
Would it, would it work to put a, a pin in the sand of a day that you think that you'd be available? Because I know sometimes, a lot of, a lot of times what happens, you know, in my workplace is if you, if you put a date on the calendar, then it actually happens versus if we say it, it needs to happen, then it just doesn't happen.
So, along that line, we might as well ask this now because, of course, you know, board selectmen are the, the managers and, and the, you are the body that, that any of the department heads are accountable to. If we're, if, if, if we're to pick a date, put the pin in the sand, if you will, and that sort of thing, we would have your support saying, okay, you know, this is a mandatory meeting.
Short of a, short of a foot of snow, yes.
Yeah.
Right. We might want to schedule a snow date.
But in other words, that's been our, our ongoing, I shouldn't say an ongoing issue. We were thinking it could be in the evening. That doesn't work out. We're ready to go with something during the day. And just long as, as it's sort of a mandatory must be and it's not a whipping, whipping session, this is a, you know, information process, that sort of thing, that's the idea.
And Steve, I don't know if anybody has come to you yet to talk about budgets, but I had, something came from the emergency squad and they wanted to know if they should base their budgets on the new figures that the personnel board got from the Collins Center when we got the new rate, the grade and the rate schedule. But that has to be approved by town meeting first before we can even use that.
Yeah, we're providing.
Why would that have to be approved by town meeting before we can use that?
Because that's in the personnel bylaws. And any changes that we're doing, it has to be approved.
Well, but to the, to, so the, the-
It's always been approved, Beth.
The wage chart's not part of the bylaw.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It is part of the bylaw.
It's out of the bylaw.
Yeah, it's in the bylaw.
Well, the definition of the grades is in the bylaw, but the table that provides the funding level for each one of those grades is not, is not actually physically in the bylaw.
Well-
I don't think we ever take it out.
No, it's in, as far as I know, it's, it's still in there and we have, and we still haven't settled yet on that. So, before they can start using this to, you know, for their new budgets for FY twenty-one, it's all gonna get approved.
Yeah, but, but I think we need to handle it similar to what we've done with any salary transactions. And I think we're now talking two steps, which I thought it was gonna be one step, but if it has to be two steps, it's two steps. One, it's addressing the bylaw and the change to the bylaw based on the recommendation of Collins and the impact on salaries. And that we're gonna do, there would be two warrant articles addressing both.
So, you would, you would ask the town to approve the, the bylaw change?
Yeah, yes, because we're writing-
Bylaw change.
We're writing up new-
And you would have an amount of money that it will cost the town to implement-
Yes.
That's correct.
Added to the budget items that are in the line item budget.
Right. That would be how I would think.
I mean, that's how we've done it in the past, but it's kind of awkward.
But I, I think that that's where we're at.
Maybe the next time we have a bylaw meeting, maybe we could have Laurie come in. We could maybe have it on Tuesday.
Question? With all this, in order to the budget, then wouldn't we require that all the departments have all their employees have step and grade assigned so that they could then plug in?
Well, we have, well, we haven't got that far yet, right?
No, I, I understand we're not there yet, but I'm saying if we're going in that direction in order to, to budget a proper amount of money for the salary, if this change is approved by the floor, then in order to do the budgeting, all the depart, all the personnel are subject to step and grade are going to have to have a step and grade assigned. And so, that's just, I'm just being your high understanding is right, make sure it's on this.
Two steps. First step, second grade identified on an article and the impact on the budget on a second article.
Yes, that's what we said, yeah. It would be an impact.
So, when you say two steps and you're talking like you'd have to do the step and grade and change the bylaws at the annual, say at the annual town meeting this time, and then the implementation would then have to be at a future meeting, you know?
Same, same meeting.
But then in order to do step two, you have to anticipate step one so that you know the staff impact of the up of the wages on your track.
You could do a two-column, a two-column budget. You can do, so if the step and grade passes on the floor, you have one column that includes an increase, kind of like you do a board of selectmen budget, FinCom budget. You do one that includes a step and grade increase and one that includes just a standard two percent, and that way, they can vote on basically which budget they want.
I, I understand that, but my point is, is that, for example, we have an employee for the library here. It's like in order for the library to do its budget, this person would have to have a step and grade assigned to them in order to know what their salary be under that condition. So, that's, I'm observing that that work is gonna have to be done in order to prepare the budget.
Yes.
It's December.
Right. Absolutely. I guess, I guess my one concern is, is that it, is that the current step and wage schedule, while referenced in the bylaw, is not currently incorporated as physically part of the bylaw. So, I, I don't know that changes to the numeric values within the step and wage schedule requires that the step and wage schedule go as an entity itself to town meeting, which is what it sounds like we're saying.
See, we've gotta get all of this approved first. We're gonna send it all in, most of the by, see, first of all, we're trying to get the bylaw done up.
Right.
And it has to go before, we've gotta send that into town council before we even get it approved at town meeting. And if, you know, if they have changes, then we have to make the changes. And then what we were going to do, when we talked about, you know, the new pay schedule that we did get from the Collins Center, we were gonna figure out what the impact would be on the town.
And I, and I agree, we need to do an impact assessment of what it is. What I'm saying, though, is that the changes to the personnel bylaw that are recommended by the Collins Center, that the, that the wage changes don't necessarily have a dependency of those bylaw changes going in front of town meeting. The, the, any wage and grade, any, any, in essence, wage changes associated with the Collins Center study can be handled through the, the board of selectmen and the personnel committee with an understanding that if it's not funded, we can't, we can't go there until we get the funding for those line items to adjust to those wages handled at town meeting. But, but we could absolutely come up with an updated, you know, wage schedule to go into place once we had the funding in place to support it, right?
After the two columns of Laura's.
Yeah, exactly.
Would it all be printed?
Well, I don't, I think we need to be clear for sure that we don't have that wage scale in the bylaw. It used to be in the bylaw and it would have had to been changed, and I don't think we've changed it. So, maybe you'd be kind enough to just make sure of that.
I'd say it needs to be an agenda topic for the night, the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Secondly, would a solution be to have a March special account, non-financial, include an article to put before the town the change in the personnel bylaw?
We won't have, no, it's, we won't have time by then because we're still working on it. Because there's a lot of changes, because we had town council was out here with us one day and there's a lot of changes that still need to be done in it.
So, let's not talk March. Let's talk, are we talking that we need a special or do, do we rely on the annual? I mean, you had, do you have time to do what you're trying to do by the annual?
We were talking about doing it by the annual, but I will talk, we were supposed to have had a meeting tomorrow, but it was canceled. So, we'll have to see if we can schedule a meeting next week and then we'll have more on.
And so, let's, let's get a target and see if, whether it's special or not. Steve has it.
May, for the purposes of glad you're pulling together this budget and working with everyone, back to timelines, can we have a timeline? Linda, I, I, I'm not sure if all this has fallen on your lap or not, but, you know, it sounds like personnel, it sounds like bylaws, all sorts of things. For when will this be done? When will we have our step and grade? When will we know?
Well, let's, well, when we meet again, I'll have some more answers for you.
When, excuse me?
When we meet again, because we were supposed to be meeting tomorrow and this was probably some of the questions that were going to be asked.
Yeah.
And answered, yeah.
Well, that's certainly what we would need to know and also something that we will need sort of a hard data on in order to do our work.
Okay, I'll see if we, so I'll see if I can schedule a meeting for next week and then we'll talk about, you know, what our deadlines are and then I'll get back to you.
What is the message we give to, the direction we give to department heads at this point regarding wages?
Level fund.
I would level fund. I would level fund them and then like, you know, if we are going to give them, you know, if we pass all of this and then we'll have like another column with the new one.
Well, we'd have a column that we could then adjust based on what we agree between advisory and-
Don't worry about it, we can't. You know, we, we've got that. I'm referring to having specific dates where we, that we can operate with it. That's all.
And I have a question before, I mean, and I, I understand that the two of you both are of the opinion that we level fund in terms of the employee salaries, but what was our headspace last year from our levy limit? So, what was?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay. So, we were four hundred thousand dollars under levy limit, four hundred thousand dollars-ish under our levy limit.
With the tax rate going down.
With the tax rate going down. So, so why wouldn't we at least fund it like a two percent or two and a half percent as a baseline start for the department heads? Okay? And then, understanding that the adjustments recommended by the Collins Center were significantly higher than that, okay? But rather than say, oh, let's level fund, if we're four hundred thousand dollars away from our levy limit-
And we put in ninety-three thousand dollars worth of deficit coverage.
Understood.
So, that, I mean, that alone will not be there next year and I can guarantee that.
So, 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 so let's be reasonable here, okay? And instead of saying, let's level fund, let's say, okay, we, we're not gonna bite in the mouth of the kid that grinds the horn. Let's at least say whether it's two, whether it's two and a half percent, whatever is an appropriate starting point. Rather than level fund, let's start there and then if there's other adjustments that need to happen in order to meet market rate, then, then let's deal with that as we go through the budget process.
But I think for tonight, Beth, and pardon me, I mean, this is just my thought, back to I was asked or we were asked about what we, we should do. When I said level fund, I didn't say that we're not gonna fund more. It was that if the advisory board has to do something, they're gonna do something based on that. The accountant's gonna do something based on that. But I'm looking to the advisory board to come to the board of selectmen, to advise the board of selectmen as to what it would be appropriate to, to move that salary structure, the whole structure, not, not even getting to the Collins stuff yet, is that, in fact, we can guess tonight a number, but I would, I would better have the advisory board come to the board of selectmen to say it's two percent or it's three percent or it's two and a half. That's where I'm parked.
Generally speaking, when I've done budgets in the past, we tell people for budgets, for payroll, any payroll accounts, send them to us level funded. We will tell you what the percentage is. Only add an increase if you're asking for additional hours or an actual pay increase.
And if that's what we're doing procedurally, then I'm okay with that.
I have, obviously, I don't know what you've done in the past year. I've seen it and it works well in other towns. That way, you can see if someone says, okay, well, I, normally I work sixteen hours, I'm hoping to increase to nineteen hours for this reason. And we always ask that they explain why, but that way, we can come back and say, okay, well, we're offering a two percent COLA for this year or something like that.
The, the challenge is socially, what has occurred is times when we put out that we're level funding, the implication is-
Good, good point.
Okay? The implication is, is that's where we're gonna stick.
And, and no, there should be no, not yield of the chair.
And there'll be a memo that goes with the whole budget packet and we can include something like that right with the how to do your payroll accounts. So, just level funding and we will come back to you with, with what the potential increase is going to be.
I agree with what Laurie's saying.
And I think we go back to what Laurie said to us earlier, that we're gonna have two columns. We're gonna have a column that talks about just a COLA.
Yep.
And we're gonna have a column that's gonna be Collins-related and then we're going to adjust.
Yep.
And that truly because of our knowledge of now past year and your calculations of even the Cal, the Collins impact.
Actually, it was Mary Lou's calculation.
Okay, Mary Lou's calculation. We're not talking a ton of money.
No, we're not. Right.
Excuse me, Laurie, can I just ask you, based upon, you know, the side yet having a panel with department heads and everything else, a, a, you know, laying it out now, do you, will you, will you be ready for us and department heads at that point for like a January date or this, or is that too early?
I'll be ready. I'm planning on working on the budget this week and getting, because I have your spreadsheet in Excel that you did last year, so maybe it's a good base for me to start with. And then I'm just gonna go through and start working on, I'll modify, I'll add the extra column as needed, and then I just need to start pulling apart what people spent over the last year so that way, they have something to work off of, like Tom and Jeff and I had discussed. This is your spent from last year. This was your budget from last year. That way, they can see in past traditionally spent.
So, for the purposes of our meeting on Thursday night, we can, we can organize a proposal of here's a couple of January dates, what works for everyone.
Yep.
You're ready, they're ready, everyone's ready?
Yep.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right. So, the elephant in the room. So, we've had discussions about February, picking up the phone and calling the auditor. It appears that that's probably not possible, that we won't have Sarah's proposal until at least next week, if not early into January. Am I correct?
Her proposal?
Proposal for nineteen.
No, her project plan for finishing nineteen.
Yeah.
We have a proposal for the thirty days to get this.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, because she's been giving us the weekly report on what's been going on in there.
Totally agree with that.
So, I met with Sarah last week and we had agreed that is, if this was something that she was going to full-on take on, throw herself into, I gave her a hard deadline of I need to be done and ready to balance every month with you by the end of February in order to get my free cash in certified and ready for town meeting, to know what I was able to say to advisory, this is what you have for free cash for the budget. And she was comfortable with that. So, we would be ready to start submitting things, I would guess, mid, mid-March.
Okay. When you pick up the phone for the auditor?
Would probably be the end of March because they'd wanna see things fully submitted into DOR, whether or not that we've received feedback yet.
It's fine, so long as it's in.
As long as it's in. As long as it's in. The problem then would be, do we have money to call and say, we can pay you? That's my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Let's start scratching for money.
That's, my only concern with that is I legally cannot transfer any of these funds anywhere.
We have an advisory board that's going to help us?
So the only way.
We don't, we don't have, actually have to go to a special and revoke budget lines in order to transfer.
So you don't have a budget. You don't have even an empty budget line for the audit because it wasn't voted as part of your fiscal year twenty budget. I am not a fan of having special town meetings because I think they're a waste of money. They generally end up to be like eight thousand dollars when you're all said and done. But the only way to get this line into your budget is to do that. Or we attempt to work out some sort of an arrangement with the auditor that says basically, we need until the June town meeting, so we can vote all of these items as fiscal year twenty articles and vote a budget line into there and vote all these transfers into that budget line, which is perfectly legal.
Yeah.
You've got fiscal year twenty rather than wasting the money. And we see what kind of feedback we get from the auditor.
Yeah, that's the only way we can transfer them is at a town meeting.
So, so then we've got two things that are crossing. We have this that we need to think about. We have Peter's thought related to your Collins Center and your bylaw change. And so we need to understand what your timing is to be able to get that done.
I'll give some calls tomorrow with committee members and we'll figure a date when we can get together and we'll discuss all of this.
And if we have to have a March or April or May that we are, are doing this such that we can call an auditor in, in March and figure out how we're going to pay them and get them in here.
I can at least reach out to him and see what his feeling would be on that.
That would be a nice to know in January. Peter's got something.
Just in terms of the, we've been talking about advisory and budgeting and so on, I'm hearing no objection to if capital planning is part of that initial budget memo?
Absolutely not. It should be part of the initial thing so that all that information flows at once.
Kind of instruction to department acting committees about making a capital request to apply here so that we can.
Peter, it wasn't your turn yet. I was bugging Steve first.
Should be one stop shopping, right?
One stop shopping.
Exactly.
We're going to be part of the train, a couple of those maybe, but still on the train. That's fine, if that's okay.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I'm going to draft something and I will send it to both of you so you can add whatever you want as your section at the bottom of the memo.
Steve, did you have a question?
Sorry, Steve?
Yeah, we were picking on Steve.
I'm, 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 I'm back to, you know, I'd like to go back to this email here about treasurer and how it's structured and I just had a couple of questions about that. You know, I, I, I see that this is a ninety, thirty day thing at ninety dollars, up to ninety dollars per hour for forty hours a week. That's thirty-six thousand, thirty-six hundred a week, total of possibly fourteen thousand for a four week shot. I'm wondering if that's, what are our expectations? Is this going to cost us four, fourteen thousand dollars for the next four weeks, if you will? All I see is the words begin and begin and create and stuff like that. I don't see a lot of the things that says, this is going to be done at this day. And I'm wondering, you know, so number two is, you know, what, what sort of.
So at the, at the end, at the end of this, at the end of this month is when we're supposed to get the plan for what the end dates would be on the activity that's going on right now. We're in the middle of the thirty day assessment and, and there is work occurring that is part of the reconciliation that is also part of the assessment.
Right.
And she has a team that she brings in with her. It's not just her alone.
And a formal proposal will be made for, for doing this for the rest of the year?
Correct.
For, for until June thirtieth?
I don't know.
No, no, no.
Laurie's already said, March.
No. So Sarah is strictly here to only clean up fiscal year nineteen with us. Holly is working on fiscal year twenty. Sarah has been gracious enough to train Holly as part of while she's cleaning fiscal year nineteen. So there is a complete divide. Sarah is only working on fiscal year nineteen. Holly is only working on fiscal year twenty. Sarah is training Holly to get her ready to go. I am also training Holly on fiscal year twenty, but there is a complete divide. When fiscal year nineteen is done, most likely Sarah will be leaving us.
Yeah, she'll be leaving us, yeah.
My goal is that hopefully we can, while Sarah's here and Holly's getting some training, Holly can start working on fiscal year twenties cashbook. I know that they briefly went over it on Friday while they were in the office together because they did call and ask if, was this the way that I was hoping the cashbook would be set up? Because Sarah does know that in the end, I'm going to be here helping Holly with questions. And is this the way that I typically run my cashbooks when I work as the treasurer? So we went over a lot of those kind of questions. So I know that they did sit together and go over some of those items. So I'm hoping that Holly will work on fiscal year twenties cashbook while Sarah's here and gain some knowledge from her. But when nineteen is closed, Sarah will leave.
Yeah, Sarah will leave. And Holly, Holly is starting to, see, a lot of her assistant treasurer duties were taken away from her.
Yes.
And so she's starting now to get back into them again. And Sarah's helping her and also Laurie is a big help to her.
So that brings me to sort of, I guess, another elephant in the room here. What's the, what's the plan? Or do we even have, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting I need a plan, but you know, what's the plan to replace the treasurer full-time with the correct person and that process and, and things like that? And what, where are we at in that thought process?
Well, I think we, the way I feel, I think we would like to get through this, you know, and probably have our audit.
Okay.
And have our audit done.
I don't, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to get somebody even to apply until we, we are at the point where we can call somebody for an audit.
That's what it is. We have to be audited and I think we have to, you know, straighten out all the problems that the audit is right up in their management letter before we can really advertise for the position.
I don't know. Well, I don't, I don't know that we'd be able to straighten everything in the audit letter before, before getting it out there. I mean, that's, that's, that may be, that might be a full year.
That's a four year. By the way, we're talking four years.
Well, I'm, I'm having wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Are you, are you, are you telling me that, that we can't, you know, chew gum and walk at the same time here? We, we, we are, we are, we will be without a treasurer, you know, a, 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 a fully competent, certified, whatever word you want to use there, on let's say, March thirty-first? What, what's the plan?
No, no, we won't be.
So personally, I would not, I would not recommend advertising right now. You will not have a single person walk in here and see that you just closed fiscal year eighteen without a cashbook, that you are in the middle of attempting to close fiscal year nineteen and you're actually only in July, that you have had this horrible turnover of people. You will not have anyone apply. You need to get nineteen closed. You do have a very competent person in there right now. Unfortunately, Holly's duties were taken away. I think she would be the perfect person to take the treasurer role. However, she doesn't want it. As of right now, she doesn't want it, but she is more than competent to take, she's more than competent to do that job. She is now have, she has access to all the banks. She knows how to run checks. She's been doing all of the turnovers. The next thing we're going to go over is how to invest the money, which is something I'd like Sarah to show her how to do. I am perfectly capable, but again, I don't want my hands in it.
Yeah, you want that division.
So I'm going to give them, it works out perfect because your former treasurer forgot to move money at Bartholomew's. So I'm going to give them a list of money that needs to be moved and they're going to work together next week and move the money at the trust accounts. There's multiple items that she's going to get a lot of experience doing. She's seeing firsthand how to use the cashbook. So I have full confidence that when Sarah leaves, that Holly will be able to do this until at least the end of this fiscal year. The other issue we have is that after funding this cleanup out of the treasurer's account, there is no more money to fund another treasurer at this time. You're paying for a massive cleanup in accounting for this fiscal year and now a cleanup in the treasurer's office. So we've depleted the reserve funds as well as any extra money we were able to find. So I'm thinking the best, the best action would be to wait until at least July first.
I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I, I, I understand that what I'm looking for is, is this, is this, you know, so before we hire a full-time treasurer or somehow fill that position, I, I would look like to hear a commitment from the Board of Selectment that you will approach at least the advisory board, perhaps capital, and bring, bring others into the process of, of, you know, looking at people, interviewing and, and this, this, you know, who are we looking for and who are, what are the qualities we're looking for in skill levels?
What are we looking for?
What are we looking for?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Well, maybe in the meantime, we can, to apply, maybe we can work some more on Holly. Holly has already had, she's gone to treasurer's school for three years and all she has to do is take her certification.
With all due respect, I've heard that, heard that and heard thank you, Steve, for five years here. Thank you. All due respect, I, I, I don't buy that.
Okay.
So, so, and so all I'm looking for is, gosh, let's, let's, you know, what's the process that we're going to go through and, 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 you know, I don't want to wake up on a Saturday morning and realize that, oh, we parted. Okay? And, 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 you know, that's where I'm going with this.
There are a dump, a number of alternatives. Hiring any persons is an alternative. Hiring a service is an alternative.
Can we be part of that discussion? I can.
You've got to budget it.
Excuse me?
You have to budget it.
That's different than being part of the hiring.
I would say if you're budgeting it, you're part of the process.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, okay.
Aren't you?
I will take your words as a, a clear yes, that yes, we will be involved in the process of finding and replacing a treasurer, whether it be a service or an individual.
And I have to say.
Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Yes. And we're hoping that the treasurer will come forward because I've been told that there was, within the three hundred and sixty-one cities and towns here in Massachusetts, thirty have retired and they're, they're finding very, they're not having very many people coming forward with replacements.
Be, be ready for that.
Yeah, you've got to be ready for that.
You're not going to find the person.
There's not, there's not many people applying for these jobs. That is part of the problem. No one's applying for treasurer and no one's applying for accounting jobs.
Strategy and smart thinking.
Well, that's something we're going to discuss after everything is all done.
Excellent. Has the idea of asking Sarah to be a mentor, trainer beyond March been discussed? In other words, if I were Holly, then I, I said, oh my God, suddenly I'm here all by myself and I don't have anything to ask.
Paid photo friend.
Laurie can help me legally, you know.
Sarah's, yeah.
But the, the idea of having a.
Contractual support.
Contractor, it's part of the deal.
We.
That's part one. Part two is, I'm paying Holly what she should be paid right now. She's taking on a tremendous amount of responsibility and she's trying to do her other jobs at the same time, I presume. She's not giving up the police job and so on and.
She comes up, she's been working on Fridays and she stays a lot later than what she's supposed to be.
I know, that's even worse. I mean, in a sense, we're taking advantage of her, of her terrific willingness to vision here.
We should be very, we're very fortunate that we have her.
But she's working above her grade.
So, so one of the things we might consider, and we probably need to take a look at it, and it's probably something that the Personnel Committee needs to review, is we did something similar down at the Highway Department during the interim when we didn't have a Highway Superintendent. So instead of changing the, their hourly wage rate, there was like a extra compensation that we had worked out at one point for some of the employees that were working above their pay grade. So that way you don't get into the complexity of having changed somebody's base salary. It's kind of like what's in the police contract. If someone's the acting chief, they get X number of extra dollars a day or a week or whatever, however it's structured. So I think that's something that, that probably, if we could refer that back to Personnel Committee and see if there's something appropriate that, during that period of time, that.
Okay.
It's on her list now.
It's on your list?
It's on my list.
I'm, I'm taking two away tonight. How many are you taking?
I'd suggest that we consider structuring some of that as a retention bonus to be paid based on certain reasons. I mean, we're, we're putting a lot of load on her shoulders and I, from what I understand, she can probably handle it, but if she's building up skills and if a nicer offer comes along, she may take it.
No.
And we may want to give her a.
No, I don't think so. Holly's.
I don't know.
No, Holly's, Holly's been here, I'd say, close to twenty years. I don't think she's going to leave.
We probably ought to defer these conversations. You're, you're moving into HR stuff guys.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Well, the, the, I, I, I think the, it's, it's a public discussion for the conversation though, so.
If it's a suggestion and you don't think it's necessary, I.
No, it's not necessary. Holly's not going to leave us.
If, if I, I'd like to bring up a different topic.
Careful.
Around the schedule for bringing in a full, full title treasurer. I know that, I hear a lot of, well, we can't do it yet. I would like to see some, some outline of a plan that would say, okay, we're going to have the job description by this date.
We have the job description already.
Linda, may I finish my point? Thank you. And then going on, the idea is saying, okay, we've got the audit coming up. We think the audit's going to be here and then we're going to get the audit report here and just saying, okay, I heard some people saying, well, we can't bring them in until the audit's done. We can't bring them in until we fix all the issues that the audit's brought up. We can't bring them in until July first when we have funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I hear a lot of constraints and I would like to under, I'd like to have some understanding of what those constraints are and how we're going to work together in order to get a full treasurer, fully full treasurer in here as soon as reasonably possible under those constraints and not find ourselves in the middle of June going, oh yeah, I guess we should put that posting out.
So Laurie gave us some information and let's reiterate what Laurie's information is because it's good because it's a couple of posts in the sand. We hope that they'd be a little firmer grounded sand, but let's have some posts in the ground. Post in the ground, March-ish, you're going to pick up the phone and you're going to call an auditor. That auditor's probably going to be through June.
At least.
At least.
Yes.
If not into July.
Yeah.
So in, in a time of sometime around July one, we want to have a strategy. And again, it will, it will be a strategy. It's not going to be, we're going to go hire somebody or we're going to go hire a service. It'll be a strategy of maybe a blend of that, a blend of local resources that might be available to us or not, if we are careful, that, that person might in fact be available to us. And we then work between the accountant's office, the current, that current treasurer's office, the advisory, and this board to determine July-ish on as to what we're going to do for having a full-time treasury, treasury operation in place.
Clarence, I, I think actually though, we need to try to set as a goal potentially of May one to have made the decision about whether we're hiring or going after a service because we are going to have to fund it.
That's a good thought.
Okay. So I, I get what you're saying and I would concur that the execution of that is probably going to start on or about July first, but I think we need to have our strategy in place by May first to say, do, do we need to fund a service or are we going to be going out to hire, right?
There's potential to continue on with Sarah. She does do services in other towns. So it would be a matter of getting a proposal with her for an actual monthly service that doesn't include cleaning up. It doesn't include cleaning up. It would just be regular service. There's other companies as well. I know I provided you with at least one other company. But the problem is there's just not many of those types of services around offer treasurers.
Right.
Because Sarah is right now, I mean, she does other towns, but Sarah is West Brookfield's treasurer right now.
So speaking of putting the advisory committee back to work. Thinking about those services, that would be something that we could between now and then. Because I think Steve, you had a couple of names as well. I'm not sure if they're the same names that Lori had.
One was, but one was independent of Sarah, correct?
Okay, so.
Same ones I did give you though.
Yes, so between now and maybe March, that maybe there could be some conversation with those different entities to understand the pricing. And again, that would be something that the advisory board could advise the board of selectmen as to those different alternatives. Because quite frankly, where I'm parked is we may have a local resource and we may definitely need a service or a combination of both. And so having maybe from March to May.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
What is advisory advising us as far as that kind of resource?
Right, seeing what the service costs and if they even have someone available come July 1.
If you'll give me the other name of that other person, I can start investigating. And the number and I'll start investigating with this new person. And then maybe this week when Lori's here, maybe I can come up and see Lori and we'll talk, we'll talk. Maybe see if she would come in as a service and get a price from her, what it would cost per year.
So Tom, did that address your question?
I think, yes, it did address it that we're going to have to wait until the audit finishes and then we're going to figure it out.
No.
No, by, that by May 1 we'll at least have an idea of what the plan will be, whether we'd be going like with treasurer direct hire, treasurer service or some hybrid of the two. At least what our proposed strategy is, right? With some assistance and support from the advisory committee regarding, you know, potentially doing some of the reach out and some of the options so that we can make an appropriate, have an appropriate discussion around making that decision on or about the 1st of May.
And that we would budget is part of the 2021 fiscal year budgeting, but that we would not, we would wait until the audit results come in before we started looking, before we started any searches.
Yes, particularly if we go with a direct hire option. So either in, regardless of whether we were going with some sort of a service or whether we were going with direct hire, we really don't have any budget for anything other than cleanup and to limp along under the good auspices of Holly through the end of the year, quite frankly.
And even if Sarah, you know, if Sarah does, we send her on her way in March and we keep Holly on and just until June. No one ever, I mean, no treasurer or no accountant has ever left like high and dry. These, the groups that we both belong to are full of resources and other treasurers. I mean, I luck out and I have my own group of people that I bounce questions off of. But the Treasurers Association, you can send an email and they're full of people who will answer your question, the photo friends. I help treasurers just because, you know, it's the nice thing to do. I had a treasurer that started in Barry and she had questions and why not help them? It's perfectly acceptable.
All the different, all of the different, like your tax collector, your town clerk, everybody. There's, you know, many out there and everybody is always willing to answer and help you. They'll come out and help you.
She's got to be willing to ask the question and follow the advice.
You just said they have an email system set up to send out your questions.
And it just sends a mass email.
It sends them out to all of them and you'll get all these questions to answer.
Ken had something.
Ken?
I've known Holly for a long time. She's very dependable. Has she been offered the money that the past treasurer was giving? I think, what does you know, it says something about $18,000 dollars has been spent on that budget that we can appropriate it?
I think what's appropriate, Ken, is that Linda's going to have a conversation and I think we should defer that question to the personnel board for the moment. I think that it's not an appropriate setting tonight to have that conversation.
Matt, if you have a main speaker?
Yes.
Just from listening and following and knowing what's been going on for the last four, five, six years, I really don't think we can wait five, six, seven, eight months to get a full-time treasurer here. I think we're going to fall back in the same hole again if we don't get somebody on board before that time period.
We understand that Dave, but just like we were trying to say before, there's so many that are out there retiring and nobody's applying for these jobs. That's the problem.
You should get a jump on it now, Matt.
And I think that the advisory board doing a review and study of the different alternatives and especially Lori providing a number of those alternatives will help us at least start on a path of developing that strategy. We're talking a May timeframe, so we're probably talking five months to then being able to execute on a strategy. Maureen had a question.
Who had a question? Peter? No? Steve?
Maureen did.
Maureen did.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm not. I think we're very fortunate that we have Lori to help us through the initial impact and then Sarah to help us through this next step. And I hope I say this correctly. Is someone going to guide the select board on what they should be looking for or not looking for on a weekly, daily, monthly, quarterly, so we never fall into this again?
We, I think we could probably ask Sarah if she would help us out and I'm sure Lori will too.
And part of it is actually adhering to our own policy and procedure handbook and getting this outfielded because some of the fundamental things that we should have been checking and should have been validating and should have been holding the two offices accountable for are contained within that policy and procedure handbook. The fundamental one that appears in like page six of the treasurer collector handbook and it is clearly in this policy and procedure book is one that maintenance of the cashbook and the reconciliation between the treasurer's cashbook and the accountant's accounting records.
General ledger.
General ledger, sorry.
That's okay.
I know the term and it just escaped me at the moment, okay? Fundamentally, we have not, we had not been as a board enforcing a written validation of where we were against our revenue posting and against our reconciliation between the cashbook and the general ledger. Okay, fundamentally, if that's happening on a monthly basis or not less than a quarterly basis, I mean, if you slip a month but then catch it up within the quarter, it's not the end of the world, right? But if it's happening less than quarterly, we're already in trouble, right?
We don't want to see that happen.
Right, so that's.
None of us want to see that happening.
So fundamentally, if we're checking those three things in essence, then at least we're probably going to be ready for the end of the year. And I may be missing something, but those are the big rocks. If those big rocks are happening, if the turnovers are happening and getting recorded real time, then really you're in a position where foundationally we'd be able to file our paperwork at the end of the year.
Right, so like I said at a prior meeting, going along with that policy, these should all be signed and read. The dollar amount should be read at a selectman's meeting monthly. Everyone should be able to see that the collector, the accountant, the treasurer are all signed, we're all balanced. This is the month we're balanced to. You can all read it. We've implemented in other towns, especially towns that had a midst of chaos where the public wanted to know what was going on, can't make the selectman's meetings. We had implemented on not only the Facebook pages, but the town website, posting of what they call just quick department reports, monthly department reports. The treasurer, the accountant, the collector and the assessor, we all wrote up quick blurbs and they got posted where you're at for the month. And we put up monthly expenditure reports. They are public information. I put them up online. Whoever knows how to use the website, I would give it to them and they would do it. And it would go on the Facebook page. And that's what we've been doing in other towns. It was well received, especially after cash mishaps.
That was something I was going to suggest, just what you're saying, monthly reports should be coming out to all of us.
They should and they should be read here. They should be posted for anyone in town to see.
Yep.
Peter?
Just going back to the budget package, we've concentrated almost entirely on expenditure budgets. We have never as a town had revenue projections. And I wonder if we could begin that process this year where we're asking departments to submit revenue projections as well as expense projections. So in some way or other, so that we begin to have goals, measurable goals. They're goals, they're not, you know, sticky to you, you don't get where you're hoped to get to, but still, if you can have a revenue picture as part of the budget picture.
So revenue projections are done. Sort of, I kind of go off what advisory does in their budget. And then when we do the tax recap, I also do, I have to do revenue projections for that current year. So I've done my own revenue projections for fiscal year 20 that were pretty similar to what advisory did. I also have to take into account that we receive a debt payment from Tantascwa and I'm pretty much in line with what advisory had put in the budget for this year. Asking the departments to give their revenue projections, you'd be asking them to only project what would be revenues for general fund only, not for anything that's coming in. So like EMS would, can't project anything that's going to hit their receipt reserve fund because we can't use any of that money. Then you'd have to, we also take into account what we're getting for motor vehicle excise, what we're getting for personal property, real estate. Generally, the way we do revenue projections is you base them off of last year's amounts. We try to stay no more than 90% of what we projected or what we received from the prior year. For this year, because I'm not confident that all of the revenues were captured, I'm fairly confident we got most of them. I think we really want to stay around 90% and asking people to do them. I think it's just one more step that if they've never been asked before, I'm not sure it's the best time to start asking.
There's one.
There's one, go. Well, the revenue generating department, one of the new recommended policies is that you ask revenue generating departments to review their fees. We have had, many of the departments have not changed their fees in years.
Dozen years.
And therefore, we're shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of our ability to generate free cash or local receipts and free cash. So it seems to me we have to have some guidance to our department heads and to ask and to conduct a review of fees.
Well, they should definitely be looking at their fees. I've suggested already that the trailer park fees not only need to be reviewed, but they need to be increased. There's a few other fees that have been brought up that need to be reviewed and increased.
So can that go in this letter that you're sending out?
Yes.
There you go.
Yep.
It's part of the annual budgeting process. They should be reviewing their fees.
Yes, just their basic fee schedule of what they're.
Some of the fees, don't they have to be, have to go before town meeting?
No, we don't have any bylaw that requires us to take fees at town meetings.
I know when I took over as town clerk years ago, it was right in, it was right in the description of the job with Mass General Law, it said I had to go before town meeting to have my fees up.
Let's understand our fees and let's understand the process to increase.
I thought we explored that though with the building inspector change in fees with Copeland and Page and there was no requirement to do that.
I had to get town meeting approval before I could do anything with the fees.
Okay, the referee's going to work here. There could be some that move in that direction. There could be some others that because of Mass General Law, possibly, that you'd have to do. But I think asking of the question is an appropriate thing.
Oh, absolutely.
And then if there's a process change that we need to town meeting, yes. No to town meeting, but we can change. And when we change the driveway opening thing there, and we've got that done a year or so ago.
That had to be sent for approval to the attorney general, wasn't it?
No, nope. We didn't wind up needing a bylaw at all in order to do it. It was just an adjustment and publication of the fee schedule.
A few years ago, when we went up on, when the tax collector would send out her demands, we had to get town approval for that.
That is town approval. Anything that goes through the tax collector's office does require town approval. But these fees, town clerk, trailer park, none of those are governed by the tax collector.
No.
Yeah, so again, asking the question is the appropriate thing. If there's a process thing, we turn it back to them to do that. But the other, we had the CBGBD, whatever.
CDBG.
That meeting last week. There we go.
Alphabet committee.
And so there was, there was a, I had to leave early, so I could not say to the whole, to the end. But there is a possibility of moving forward with additional efforts in that area. As far as, and as well as $27,000 that we may be able to use in FY '18 or something like that. I can't remember exactly. But the point I'm making is that we should make sure Kathy is working with your group as far as those, she had a nice report there that we had yesterday and as far as what's possible and whatnot. So again, that's revenue generating and so we ought to make sure we understand that as well as the CBDG potential that we have. So again, that's a conversation as well as Cindy in the highway and all that she does is maybe if within that budget, we can understand her thoughts.
Could through the board of selectmen and Steve and the advisory committee, would they make a review of revenue and fees part of their budget review?
That'd be a good, I think that's appropriate. It's going to be in Lori's letter running by.
I think that the departments themselves, they should probably put some feel about and see what other towns are getting for their fees. Because a lot of them are the same for you.
I will say this, we're asking the same questions. I guess we've sort of felt like, almost like what you said. It's, we have found that either the departments don't know or it's approximate and it's certainly nothing they've been asked in the past. We're asking, and I guess Peter, sure, we can formalize it. I don't know how far it goes to this year, but yeah, it's of interest to us and particularly a couple of key people on our team.
Thank you.
I want to thank Lori for her report.
I know, Lori, and I want to thank Lori for all the work that she's done with us and she's been working with the departments. She's been very cooperative.
Can I, can I just say, thank you to Linda, Clarence, Beth, Lori. I just think you really moved quickly when we needed to move quickly and found, you know, an organization that can step in. And, you know, I think you helped prevent some real damage, particularly personnel around here and all. And yeah, we've got a lot of work to do, but I just think it's made me feel good about, you know, the changes that happened in a very short amount of time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The agenda is complete?
They're all complete and I would like a motion to resign to.
Advert.
To adjourn at 8:19.
Do you have that motion?
Second.